He's here in the audience with us. And that's that. I mean, he's already on the Housing Authority, does a great job. I talked to Lynn, very satisfied with Jerome's work on the Housing Authority. So is there a motion to appoint Jerome Smith as a tenant board member on the Acushnet Housing Authority?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
So I'm done? Okay, then I guess we're ready.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, again.
Thank you. Next, we have annual appointments. We got the Board of Selectmen Administrative Assistant Tanya Tavaz. It's been a long time, she's been waiting a long time for the actual appointment. Mr. Tavaz is an excellent employee, a great addition to the Board of Selectmen's office. She's caught right onto the position as she did in the Billing Department. It's a pleasure to have her working in our office, gentlemen.
Agreed.
Is there a motion to appoint Tanya Tavaz?
Motion to appoint Tanya Tavaz as a Board of Selectmen Administrative Assistant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a Town Accountant, the interim Todd Hassett. Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town Accountant Assistant Nicholas Monticello.
Motion to appoint Nicholas Monticello as Town Accountant Assistant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have the Town Treasurer Collector Assistant Carla Mareo. Is there a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint Carla Mareo as Town Treasurer Collector Assistant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And next, we move on to election workers for the Town Clerk's Office. We have Jan Barrett, Diane Patello, Christine Brown, Allison Brunette, Andrew Corey.
Andrea.
Andrea Corey. Thank you, Mr. Owner. Nancy DeFelice, Rosemary Dupont, Margaret Fernandez, Diane Ferrera, Carolyn Fortin, Jan Fortin, Riley Fortin, Richard Jasek? Linda Gomes, Carol Gravanas, Paulette Hudson, Beth Kalanowicz, Carol, I think, Leet? Yep. Ashley Leonard, Sharon Leonard, Elizabeth Lever, Mary LeBeau, June Memrise, Pauline Lincoln, Maria Moore, Margaret Marta, Frances Model, Susan Perry, Everett Filla Jr., Fay Filla, Sharon Pickering, Richard Resendes, James Rollins, Priscilla Santos, Aline Todd, Jaclyn Russellano?
Russellano.
Russellano? I apologize to anybody I may have mispronounced your name. Is there a motion to appoint as election workers?
Motion to appoint.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have, I don't know if Nick Scott Arthur Perlman, it looks like the attorney for the liquor transfer.
Hello.
How are you doing?
Good here.
How are you, sir?
Good over here.
We have a transfer of a package store all alcohol license from Silveria Company, Inc. DBA Jason's Variety to Akant, Inc., DBA Liquor Palace. I think the pronunciation of the name is Evan Patel, which would be the manager. Mr. Perlman, do you have anything to say to the board?
I can just summarize it if it pleases the board. My name is Arthur Perlman. I represent Heaven Patel and Akant, Inc. They're seeking the transfer of the package store all alcohol license currently held by Silveria Company, Inc. for the premise at 270 Main Street in Acushnet. Akant is a Massachusetts corporation. Heaven Patel is the sole officer, director, and shareholder. Mr. Patel is currently living in Tewksbury, Massachusetts. He has owned and managed businesses in Ipswich and New Bedford, Massachusetts, which have alcohol licenses. Heaven will be the manager of this business and spend at least 40 hours a week at this business. The business currently operating at 270 Main Street in Acushnet is open seven days a week with hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Mr. Patel intends to be open 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. every day with sales of alcohol only after 10:00 a.m. on Sunday. The layout of the store will be as per the floor plan that we submitted with the application. Heaven Patel already, having been in the liquor business, is familiar with the laws relative to the sale of alcohol. Additionally, Heaven has completed the tips program and has their certification. Heaven will not only uphold the statutory laws, but also familiarize himself with any rules or regulations of the town of Acushnet regarding the sale of alcohol. We respectfully request that the board approve the transfer of license to Akant, Inc. and the pledge of license to Rockland Trust.
Okay, so you said the current license is Monday through Saturday, 8 to 10 p.m.?
I think it's, I think it's every day of the week, every day of the week, 8 to 10. I'm sure they only sell after 10 on Sunday because of state law. And Mr. Patel will be doing the same thing. He's just added an hour to it. He'll be open until 11 p.m.
So does the board have anything to say about the hours of operation and extending that license for an additional hour in the evening? Anything good? Is there a motion to transfer the liquor license from Silveria Company, Inc. to Akant, Inc.?
Motion to transfer license from Silveria Company to Akant, Inc.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Vmals will make it official and will modify the hours on the license to 11 p.m.
Can you also note on that that it's going to be a pledge of the license to Rockland Trust?
Yep.
They will be a pledge of the license to Rockland Trust.
Thank you.
Well said. Is there, we made the motion to extend the additional hour to 11 p.m., gentlemen, so it's official on the license?
Mr., sir, when Mr. Patel officially takes over and he's, you know, at the facility, you know, he's at his place, we may stop by just to say hi, introduce ourselves to him, welcome him to the community, wish him well. And if he wants to come to a meeting at some point, come on in as well, just, you know, we like to do that with our small business owners, especially somebody who's new to the community.
I believe Mr. Patel is up there, too.
Oh, is he? All right, well, hey, congratulations. Love to see you, and we'll stop by to say hello, and if you want to come in here, we'll do that as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations, my friend.
Welcome to Acushnet.
Thank you, sir.
Did we have a motion to modify?
Motion to modify all alcohol license hours of operation for Akant, Inc. to 11 p.m. on the license.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go, you're all set, gentlemen. Make sure you check IDs.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Department of Public Works Water Sewer Department, new hire, we just hired two individuals a few weeks back. One of those individuals did not work out with Mr. Manad, and now there's a request for a Justin Martins to be hired to the water sewer maintenance technician. Everything's been done, Cory checked, drug test, and all that is all set, correct, Ms. Silva? Is there a motion to appoint Justin Martins to the position of water sewer maintenance technician?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pedestrian Safety Presidential Terrace in Lake Street. There's nothing in my book on that. I'm just going to turn it over to Selectmen Warner. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, I know Mr. Kelly's been working with the Safety Committee on both. We've got a status, I think we're going to wait to order the machinery, the signs, is that right?
We had an issue on the, as far as the guardrails with some processing. We straightened it out between Ms. Silva and Todd Hassett today, and so what we're waiting on is the signs are there, are they?
So Lake Street has the crosswalk signs, the blinking ones. We just put two additional ones in at Lake Street. What's missing is the actual crosswalk painted in.
Got it.
As soon as we hire, we're going out for procurement for line painting for FY24. That will be included once that's done.
The guardrails look great over there. I mean, I think it's a big safety improvement.
Yeah, it looks great. I love it. And then the same on Presidential Terrace. The Safety Committee voted in to put in the crosswalk with those blinking lights right down near Presidential Terrace around the corner. We've discussed it, but we're going to wait again until we get the line painting in, and then we'll order those signs and put those up as well. Hopefully this summer.
Do you know offhand, like?
The location is still before the Safety Committee. There's a meeting the 26th, and we're just going to verify some of the sightlines for the placement.
Yeah, my big concern, obviously, is we don't want to give people a false sense of security where they hit the button. If it blinks a sign, my concern is people traveling, yes, that would be what?
West.
Traveling west, that, as you're coming down that hill, not knowing, you know, because that can sneak up on you pretty quickly, so I don't know if there's a way to put some additional signage, you know, I don't know, you guys can figure that out, but I just want to make sure that people know that if somebody's, when you're coming around that corner, if somebody's crossing, that.
You may before him.
Yeah, I think, I agree, and I spoke with the board last meeting, I think the sign needs to be at the crest of the hill, and even coming from west to east, I think the sign really needs to be on the north side because you can't see the south side of the road when you're coming down west to east. I think it makes sense to have the sign over there with a flashing thing, one of the people going west to east, because David said, when you're coming the other way, it creeps up on you quick. When you're coming this way, if you're not on the crusted hill on the left-hand side, you don't know anything's happening, and it's going to be way too late, as he just alluded to. So that needs to be figured out, the sightlines, and make sure there's ample few hundred feet of visibility to that sign.
There's also discussion on a flashing speed limit sign.
Right.
Yep, what else?
Very good.
Thank you. All right, good enough. Next, we have snowplow contractor dispute that's been put on the agenda. You know, I heard about it, seen about it, a bunch of emails going back and forth, and I got a letter from Mr. Hassett, the Town Accountant. He said, "On September 23rd, 2022, the Board of Selectmen took a vote regarding hiring retaining plow drivers. See Acushnet cable tape at 6:20 minutes. Please know that this office has upheld the board's position and approved all payments for the 2022-2023 winter season. Subsequent to the board vote, DPW issued a notice seeking plow drivers on October 7, 2022, which said, 'In pot, the town will be offering $1,000 bonus for each, to each snowplow driver for reporting and plowing each storm once you are called upon. One driver did not meet the board's criteria, as he did not report for the one plowable event on 2/28/23. DPW submitted a listing for $1,000 bonus payments, which included this vendor. My office refused to approve the payment to this vendor, see also Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 56. Since that time, a variety of reasons have been suggested as to why the vendor did not report, fully expecting us to simply issue the bonus payment. These reasons included, see attached supporting documents. The vendor had a planned vacation for a DPW. He came in, but then his truck broke down, per DPW. Driver offered to respond with a different truck than contracted and insured, but was told, 'Do not report,' per DPW. Pistons in truck were broken, therefore could not get to the DPW, per the vendor driver's recent unscheduled visit to our office looking for his bonus. The town administrator verbally instructed our office to pay the vendor. I will not sign off on a directive that contradicts the board's clear position on this matter. Please know that this office takes its role regarding disbursement of public funds seriously in accordance with the state and local requirements, along with specific votes of the board. Should the board prefer this vendor not now be paid, please vote to amend your original 9/23/2022 position and direct us to pay the vendor." Thank you. That came from the Town Accountant Todd Hassett, and there is some backup documentation. I'm not going to get into reading all the emails and things of the like, but I can tell you on the supportive documentation that we have, we have 18 snowplow drivers that were paid for snowplowing and 18 snowplow drivers that received a bonus in the amount of $1,000.
Mr. Chairman, when in my discussion with DPW, the discussion centered on whether this gentleman was reporting to work on that date, and it was told to me that he was reporting and went to bring his truck in, and that, it was my understanding that the superintendent even went out to help him start his truck, which was not operating, and that he had made the attempt and had gone from his property with the truck. Subsequent to that, there were multiple stories, as Mr. Hassett said, reported from different individuals, and that's when I asked you to put it on the agenda so that the board could decide.
Yep, so the way I look at this is, and to be fair to the 18 other operators/vendors that came in and snowplowed, the way I view this is, if you haven't been paid one hour for snowplowing, then you should not receive a bonus. And that's how I view it. It was the policy of the Board of Selectmen that we said perfect attendance, and that would mean that you have to be on payroll in order to get $1,000, and I think it would be extremely unfortunate if we paid somebody for not plowing, not being on payroll, and paying that individual versus the other individuals that actually performed the work on that one snow event.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. I think this could open up a dangerous precedent. Not that I don't want to pay people if they deserve it, but if you didn't actually drop your rate in town, I don't think it's appropriate. I think it will open up plenty of options for people to get paid stuff they're not supposed to get paid next year or years forward.
I agree. You know, the way I looked at it is, if you had one hour of payroll and that truck broke down while he was on the job in the town of Acushnet, it is what it is. We pay the one, I would, I would feel that you paid the $1,000 bonus fee because he was on the job, he was paid an hour of snowplowing. But to be on payroll to request a $1,000 bonus payment for doing nothing, I think you're right, it sets precedence, Mr. Warner.
I know, I agree. I mean, look, try to be creative in a program like this, which I think is really generous, and, you know, the old expression, no good deed goes unpunished, right? We don't want to, you know, trivialize a program, but I think is good, so I agree with you, gentlemen, unfortunately.
Is there a motion to deny payment?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have vacation carryover buyout request for various departments. So, this gets a bit confusing, gentlemen. I've done my best to shuffle the deck today, I'm making phone calls to a number of people. There's two lists here. I'm going to start off with the second list and just ask Mr. Kelly if this list was approved at approval this meeting, is that correct?
Certain names were not approved in the second list.
So, I thought we did them all. So anyways, is there a motion to approve Nicole Peckham, the 18 and a half hours carryover from the Assessors Department?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Conservation Joanne DeMello, carryover 35 hours.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then Karen Amarello, on your list, from the Treasurer Collector's Office, would like to buy back 30, and the hours are incorrect, it's 30.25 as of now, so I guess this would all be, you know, preliminary, up to 30.25 hours, and buyback those hours from Ms. Amarello.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
To the new list, Police Department Chief Richmond shows 40 hours. I had a conversation with Mr. Richmond this morning, just looking at his previous email to Mr. Kelly. 40 hours doesn't cut it. He talks about 80 other hours, it's a little bit confusing when you read the email. The chief technically has 120 hours. He used eight hours last Friday, so that brings his total to 112 hours. He's, he would be interested in 40 hours carryover, 40 hours buyback, leaves him 32 hours, and the chief anticipates using those days. So, I would ask in kindness to our chief, being under the constraints that he has been with five, missing five offices this year, three to the military, two to leave the state barracks, kind of tip the department upside down, as we all know, so I would ask for a carryover one week, 40 hours, buyback 40 hours, and hopefully he can use the four other days that he's anticipating and being able to use, but if he can't for some reason, any additional hours on the 40 hours buyback will just be added to the buyback.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have from the Assessors Department, she had anticipated taking some vacation time, but there was a cancellation at the last minute, Kelly Coska, she wants, she's looking to buy back 35 hours. She does put in a note that she possibly will not have the funds inside of her budget. I will leave that to Mr. Kelly in the, in the Town Accountant's office to figure out where we could do the buyback. It's at the end of the calendar here, gentlemen, so we can do interdepartmental transfers to cover the cost of the buyback. I would prefer the buyback over carryover because it just sets you up for failure next year as well.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then we have Steve Tibbles from the Gulf, he's looking to carryover 40 hours. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then Mr. Kelly informed me when I was coming through the door, Mr. Norm Tessier is requesting 40 hours of carryover. And the, and the Gulf Committee did support a letter and voted for, but Mr. Kelly had some information when I was walking through the door, so if you'd like to share that with the board, Mr. Kelly?
The carryover provisions are either leftover from individual agreements, or they're part of a union contract. He is neither part of a union contract, nor has an individual employment agreement. He's an employee at will.
How does the board want to proceed with this individual? Have him use it or lose it? What is the board's pleasure? Is there an option for the board, or is it just to deny?
It's at the pleasure of the board. There's no provision.
For carryover for this individual?
For this individual.
It is what it is, right? It's pretty clear cut. If you break the provision for one, then you're going to have to do it for everybody.
All right, I agree. All right? Will this Tessier know that he needs to use a week's vacation?
Yep. So is there a motion to deny?
Yep, I'll second that.
Carryover?
Motion's been made to deny, second by Selectmen Warner. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I've also had a conversation with the Animal Control Officer, Ms. Tomlinson, she'd like to buy back 68 hours. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's the other one we'll have to do it.
Okay, so basically, because we won't have another meeting until July 11th, it's, everybody else needs to use it or lose it, correct?
Correct.
Very good. All right. Bicycleist Memorial Bike. So we established a, you know, a bike committee. We all know about the tragedy that happened on South Main Street with a bicyclist down at our Council on Aging, and Sandra sent us a letter saying, "I am writing today to request permission to erect a memorial ghost bike in Acushnet near 59 and a half Main Street, which was the site of the fatal bicycle crash on December 22nd, 2022. Mass Bike, with the support from volunteers, prepares and installs ghost bikes to bring attention to the advocacy needed for safer bicycling. I have been speaking with a friend of James LeAndre, and his family would like the ghost bike memorial to be placed near the crash site. The ghost bike has been created and is shown in an attached photo. The South Coast Bikeway Alliance and Mass Bike would plan a small dedication ceremony at the site." And it goes on to say to learn more, you can visit Mass Bike Memorial page. So I guess this, it's a request from the Board of Selectmen. There is a picture in this, if camera can see this picture of the ghost bike, it's basically a white bike, it's like a 10-speed bike painted. I guess it's looking for permission to place this ghost bike somewhere on the property, I would imagine, at the Council on Aging. And I'm not an advocate of turning crises into, you know, memorials, especially like this, and I don't think that we could do this everywhere. God forbid, if it happens on the places in town, I wouldn't want to see these bicycles everywhere, but seeing how this one is, you know, was such a fatal thing, if the board feels inclined to have this memorial, I think it would warrant it.
Mr. Chairman, within, if the board is in favor, there should be a provision to maintain this memorial included in the permission, that the people who are setting it up have a duty to maintain it.
Yeah, I agree.
I just hope that nothing, you know, I don't, I don't know much about it, it shows, it shows a nice picture of it and stuff like that, I just hope that, you know, we don't have individuals start messing with it, right?
Correct.
That's always my problem with certain things being left out by roadside, so whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Is there a location that we have? I know Heather indicated that they found something, I mean, if it was.
It's on the COA property.
Right, so it's not like right on the road or anything, right?
It would not be right on the road, but.
We like to set it back. I think that's what Mr. Warner's trying to say, is, you know, give it a little bit of a setback, so that when people are, you know, either walking or riding bikes, that they ain't messing around, and they have to be on our property to actually.
We can figure out, and, you know, like, I think to your point, Mr. Gasper, about maybe this would serve as the spot, God forbid, if there are other tragedies like this, like that would be the.
This would have to be outside of the right of way of South Main Street.
Yeah, I agree. So whatever the pleasure of the board is.
I'll make a motion to approve the ghost bike memorial with the provision that Mass Bike maintains the site from any damage or any repairs needed.
I'll second that. All those in favor? And next, we have the ratification of the interim Treasurer Collector MOU. Gentlemen, you have an MOU in front of you, I've read through it, it's in accordance with the previous interim Treasurer Collector. Dollar amount is the same from the previous one. Is there a motion to approve the interim Treasurer Collector Memory of Understanding for Jaclyn Boudreau?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's in the purple folder, the first signature.
Next, kind of a quick, it's a lease agreement.
That's an FYI to the board. We are waiting, the schools asked us to wait while they get all the figures, and they will present it to the board in the future. We have sent the lease to our attorneys, to school attorneys, and we are waiting for reports, but just for your files.
Can you, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Chairman, through you, I'm sorry, can you just check with the school to make sure that they have connectivity approval through Eversource? Because I remember years ago, through, when we had the Energy Committee, John Roy and myself, we were looking basically at the same thing, right? But there was an issue of connectivity with Eversource. I just want to make sure, and Mr. Roy.
That's part of the issues we addressed when getting the figures.
All right, just want to make sure, because John reached out to me and reminded me of that, and I said I would follow up on that, so...
Yeah, it's like, it's a problem with a lot of the solo farms that are trying to get in here. And I just, I'll point out right now to you, letter F on page five, that's very confusing. I don't know how they talk about, "We, being the host, have been informed by the provider acknowledges that the presence of and construction and operation of the project and other activities related to the development, operation, and decommissioning of the project may potentially result in some nuisance to host, such as visual impact. Host hereby accepts such nuisance and waives any right that the host may have to object to such nuisance, and host releases provider from any claims host may have with respect to any nuisance, provided that the project as built is consistent with the site plan and specifications attached here too, as amended from time to time and otherwise approved by host, which approval shall not be unreasonably withheld, conditioned, or delayed."
I'll raise it with town council.
Sounds to me like they don't care what happens after they take it down.
What?
It sounds to me like, you know, they're saying ultimately if they take this down after it's decommissioned, it might be a nuisance-looking structure sitting in the parking lot without any...
Yeah, it says, "It acknowledges that the presence of and construction and operation of the project and other activities related to the development, operation, and..." I get it to that degree, it's just that I think council needs to really take a good look at that. And G is the one that's really on the same page, like, I guess, second sentence is, "As host shall perform all maintenance, repairs, and replacements required under this subsection, H collectively the maintenance promptly after host learns of the need for such maintenance, but in any event, within thirty days after, provider gives written notice to host of the need of such maintenance." What the heck does that mean? It's kind of flipping everything on its head, isn't it? That doesn't make any sense, because first we're talking about the host, which is us, if we have to go out and do maintenance on the grounds underneath of the canopy, but then it says that the provider gives written notice to the host for need of such maintenance thirty days, within thirty days. So that paragraph doesn't even make any sense. G. So that needs to be revisited, I believe. I think they might have put provider where host belongs in, after the thirty days, I guess. So it really needs to be scrutinized a bit more. And just to look at it, I mean, the rent, it says in lieu of monetary rent, so I guess we need to know, is the town of Acushnet still collecting personal property taxes on such canopy, just like we would off any other solo farm? We're still collecting the personal property? And we don't have a copy of the PPA, the power purchase agreement? So we can't really make a rational decision on whether we want to go forward with this.
This is, this is just in your folder for your review. I don't think the school is within six months of even considering an agreement...
I just think it needs a lot more vetting, and even though we're loving on page eight, it says taxes, section eleven of the PPAs incorporated, they're fully set forth herein. Well, we don't have a PPA in front of us, so this is kind of...
This is...
So it's just a review?
This is, they're building the paperwork, and the school is still in heavy discussions as far as the financial viability of this.
Okay, very good. Mr. Kelly, you have anything on the property and casualty insurance? Does it have nothing in the packet for us?
Correct. I have been in discussion with various providers. We're down to two, the present provider, Maya, and Hub International. Hub International has given us almost financially equivalent package as Maya, remembering that Maya was the group that refused to bid on the medical insurance. The Hub International is using the seven-one-twenty-three base workers compensation rate, so there'll be no mid-year adjustment like there has been with Maya. The public official employment-related practice liability, Maya will only pay up to a hundred and fifty thousand. The entire judgment would be paid by Hub International. The police fire and accident, IOD would be with VFIS, not Cavit Risk. It would include a thousand dollar a week loss of income for cancer coverage for firefighters. It would include a million dollars of medical expense coverage for AIDS, hepatitis, HIV, when the, it would be a hundred and fifty thousand for Maya. Maya's weekly indemnity is for, will cover, covers call firefighters only. This would cover all firefighters. Maya covers junior firefighter medical expenses at twenty-five thousand. VFIS covers them to a million. Maya provides single limit coverage of a million, three million for employment practices Hub will provide separate limit of a million, three million for each claim. And the other interesting thing is Hub will provide maintenance equipment coverage for the golf course. So fairly similar price with a lot more coverage from Hub. So it's a question of whether the board, the deductibles are five thousand dollars. Most of the coverage is a million, three million. It's just these extras. I want to remind the board that Cavit Risk also refuses coverage on a number of IOD claims, whereas VFIS I've dealt with in the past, and they're far superior, and they offer more coverage here.
I was going to say the injured-on-duty one is the big one, right? It costs us a lot of money.
Yep.
Because they didn't cover.
Yep.
So I think just that alone would pay for itself in any difference, obviously, right? It's a huge number that we got stuck with.
Yes.
So sixth figure. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the town administrator to execute an agreement to purchase property and casualty insurance, workers' compensation insurance, and injured-on-duty insurance. Hub International, New England LLC, including workers' compensation insurance with MEGA, which is the Massachusetts Education and Government Association Group, and IOD insurance with VFIS Group.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right. On the new business, Golf Greens mower. Mr. Isaac, this is a new lease. They do have, I spoke with Mr. Isaac today as well, they have the money in the budget already for this lease, and it's a Toro thirty-four-hundred triplex T mower, ordered last year, is ready for delivery. The purchase price is seventy-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and eleven cents. And they go on to say at their May twenty-fifth meeting, committee meeting, the Gulf Committee voted unanimously to recommend that we enter a five-year lease agreement with one dollar Maya, with the first payment starting in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Annual payments will be seventeen thousand, eighty-three dollars, with the last payment in fiscal year twenty-twenty-eight. And again, the money has been put into the budget, fiscal year budget, for this lease agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the ambulance, couple, actually, ambulance abatements. Fire chief, Thomas Fallon is here. Mr. Fallon, I don't know if we want to be mentioning individual names on the abatements. We don't normally do that as a practice, if you want to. Actually, I can do that first. I can just ask for a motion to abate the amount of two hundred and sixty dollars for one bill, and the other bill was, was... Do you have the other ninety? No? Do you just give the other one?
Two hundred and sixty and the other...
A hundred and nine ninety-six?
That's the one.
So is there a motion to abate to the ambulance bill abatement of the amount of a hundred and nine dollars and ninety-six, ninety-six cents for one individual, and another one in the amount of two hundred and sixty dollars for another individual? There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the hardships have been proven, gentlemen. And then we have Mr. Fallon, he worked with the town finance department, he wants to talk about a, you know, a standard operating policy for ambulance bill.
Typically, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, how it's worked in the past with Chief Gallagher performing, and up until now, is we work with ComStar, our ambulance billing company, they go through all the process of sending out the bills to the insurance companies, whatever copays are left, they then bill after three bills that get sent to a collection agency. They do send out hardship request forms, depending on the situation. They get those back, they refer them to us once they complete it, and then we do that. In addition, there's some other unfilled requests from that process that just stay on the tax rolls. And in speaking with Mr. Hassett and Mr. Monticello upstairs, we found it best if we create this policy that says anything that is three years or older gets removed. At likelihood, at this point of us gathering anything from those bills is very slim. And also, we've taken into account other area departments and what their standard operating procedures are as far as bill abatements, and that's where the second line comes in, which is anything under a hundred dollars at the request, it is approved by you prior. Anything requested to be abated under a hundred dollars, so ninety-nine ninety-nine and less.
So anything under, anything under a hundred bucks, basically, doesn't need to come before the board?
Correct.
If it's an outstanding balance, you know, a few years or whatever it is?
Correct.
That could be done from the finance office?
Correct. Anything over that would come before you, as we did earlier tonight?
Yep.
And then it would also clean up the rules at Mr. Hassett and Mr. Monticello's request, just to make their accounting easier and make the town in a better position without having that liability kind of hanging over our head.
Gentlemen, questions, comments? Makes sense to me?
Yes.
Makes sense to me. So this is, this is a motion to adopt the standard operating policy, number twenty-three dash one. Mr. Kelly, is that sufficient? Is there a motion to adopt standard operating policy, number twenty-three dash one, ambulance bill abatement policy?
Show move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief, great work.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Appreciate it. Thanks for cleaning things up over there. All right. So right of first refusal, gentlemen. We've had a couple of these from this particular landowner that subdivided up a little piece of land, three lots. Mr. Francois is here. In the past, we've always foregoed our right of first refusal. Other boards and commissions have voted on it to forego the right of first refusal. Again, small portion of land here that was intended to be subdivided into three house lots, is that correct?
Correct.
So is there a motion to forego the town's right of first refusal?
Show move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Thank you, gentlemen. A new policy for departmental turnovers. I don't know if you gentlemen had enough time to read through this policy. I think it's a great policy. I think it's something, I know we may have something on the books. I think Mr. Kelly had said something to me, and I said, "Well, we need to redo it and give an updated policy and procedure on how to take care of these issues." He's done just that for the board and for the town accountant and treasurer-collector's office. I don't see anything. I've read through it. I think it makes a whole lot of sense. Mr. Kelly, you got anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, this is the first of a number of policies. As you saw with the fire chief, we're starting to clean up things, and we're looking to put policies in place that make sure from now into the future. I had a meeting today with the auditors, with the finance department. We are looking not only for the departmental turnover, we're looking for billings, we're looking for payroll issues. There are a number of issues that have to be addressed, and I think the best way to address them is to have the board adopt modern policies. We will then be going into personnel policies such as harassment, et cetera, updating them according to the new statutes, but we thought it would be more important to deal with the finance ones first.
Absolutely, three hundred percent.
This is a great idea.
Gentlemen?
And it answers problems that we've had recently.
Correct.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Kelly, can you, can you please, you know, send this out or have it sent out from our treasurer-collector's office immediately?
Actually, we're going to have it sent out from the board. It's your policy.
That's fine, that's fine. Whatever needs to be done, but I think it needs to be done ASAP, because Mr. Kelly and I have had conversations about, you know, bills and delicacies and things of the like, so let's get it out ASAP. Decommissioning reorganization, we did a motion in a second, and all those in favor on that one, right, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay, boss. Decommissioning reorganization committees, I don't have anything in my book, but it just says we're going to decommission Open Space Committee and Phase Two Stormwater Committee, because Mr. Kelly said those two committees haven't met in a decade or better. Is that correct?
From what I understand, the two thousand and seven for the, two thousand and seven for the Phase Two Stormwater Committee was the last time that it actually produced anything. It was constituted in two thousand and two to develop local regs for stormwater, and it was the original development of your stormwater bylaw. And most of the members on record are not either here or have resigned all other committees. So there seems to be no purpose for this Phase Two Stormwater Committee.
I think that's taken a turn in a different direction from, you know, two decades ago anyway, right?
Correct.
We have MS four permitting now, we have people from town meeting for engineering and things of the like. I think it's a little more complicated in today's regulatory environment.
With MS four, yeah.
So I think, I think we have our bases covered there. And the Open Space Committee, that's another one else.
It's all vacant, and two thousand twenty was the last time that there was a member.
Anything, gentlemen, on decommissioning Open Space Committee?
No.
Anything on decommissioning Phase Two Stormwater Committee?
No.
Is there a motion to decommission Open Space Committee and Phase Two Stormwater Committee?
Show move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the conversion to ad hoc safety committee makes a lot of sense instead of, it's mostly department heads, instead of getting into the process of hosting meetings in a forty-eight-hour rule, if something came up that was constitutes an emergency and all that, yuck. It's basically Mr. Kelly, police chief, fire chief, and building...
Commissioner. Joe Korea.
And the health agent.
And Jim Renard.
Mr. Renard. So it's basically department heads, gentlemen. They can meet at their pleasure without having to post agendas and all that stuff. Is there a motion to convert the safety committee to an ad hoc committee?
Show move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. All right, we get some conservation appointments. Three individuals actually are interested in, and I guess they got the board of selectmen's message for last meeting all around. And there is some confusion. I had a conversation today with the town clerk, Ms. Labonte, and it's supposed to be the way the commission was set up, two appointments need to be done in two thousand twenty-four, two in two thousand twenty-five, and two in two thousand twenty-six, I mean, three in two thousand twenty-six. So there will be, for these three individuals, the replacement of Evelyn Roulet, which resigned, last not to be reappointed. She expires in two thousand twenty-five. She expires in two thousand twenty-five. And the Paul Valenti individual that hasn't been on conservation for a while now, his appointment expires two thousand twenty-five. So with that said, is there, we have three letters of interest. Gentlemen, you've had time to look at them. I'll just name the names. We got Doug Thomas, James Souza, and Christian D'Souza. So is there a motion, I kind of did this around, is there a motion to appoint James Souza to replace Rick Pimentel's appointment? Now it expires two thousand... I can't say when it expires. Not even two thousand twenty-three, but...
I made the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appoint Christian D'Souza to replace Paul Valenti?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion to appoint Doug Thomas to Evelyn's position?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I know Tanya, our administrative assistant's working with Ms. Labonte to try to strain out all these appointments so that the expirations come up on time. Things got a little bit, I guess, entangled in the COVID era. So we're, they're working together to figure out how the appointments will work out. So I think that's that. Cultural council appointments, I think that's somewhere in the same package or let me jump to the next one. So we have a Joanne Mason?
Mason.
Mason. All right. Mason, that would like to be appointed to the cultural council. Is there a motion?
Motion to appoint Joanne Mason to the cultural council.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have a letter also for an appointment to cultural council from Pauline Texero.
Motion to appoint Pauline Texero to the cultural council.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And we do have a resignation of Dunston Eric, Eric Whitlock from historical commission. Motion to accept resignation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town administrators report?
As the board knows, and I have just said, we are going to do a very deep dive into the financial policies. And we'll be presenting policies probably every meeting from August on, if not before. It was very interesting sitting with the new town auditor. One of the issues that might come up that the board has to be addressed on is that the water department on the books might have to be carried similar to an enterprise account under the new GAAP, GAAP, uh, government accounting practices.
Practices.
But it would not mean the change as far as how we do business.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's interesting with the new auditor because he has come, come up with a number of questions. He will address them for the twenty-twenty-three as he, myself, and Todd look at a number of things. It's good to have a fresh set of eyes.
Anything else, Mr. Kelly? No, I mean other town administration. Selectmen's announcements, gentlemen, anything?
Nothing on my end.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
I just want to point out that I'm really glad that everybody has been paying attention and sending letters and to join these committees that desperately needed members. And I appreciate everyone that did send a letter. And we have plenty of more vacancies, so keep sending them in.
All right. We ain't gonna meet until, I think, July eleventh is our next scheduled meeting because the Fourth of July is on a Tuesday. So I would like to just say happy Fourth of July to everybody. Please be responsible. If you have a cookouts and, and parties and the things of the likes, please be responsible and be very careful. But have a great Fourth of July celebration. And if you do do fireworks, which are illegal in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but if you do do them, please have respect for your neighbors as a lot of people have pets that are disturbed by fireworks. And then we do have a number of military veterans that could have PTSD that also disrupts their livelihood as well. And I know of an incident in previous years that that happened to a veteran and it's extremely unfortunate. And actually, it wasn't in Acushnet, but it was just over the border in New Bedford. And it turned into a little bit of a problem. So if you, if you do have fireworks, please be respectful and don't be doing it late at night. Thank you. All right. So information only, we got the alternate commissions. Mr. Hinckley talked about agricultural commission, two alternate vacancies, beautification commission, committee, six vacancies, board of appeals, two vacancies, one alternate bylaw review committee, one alternate commission of trust funds, one vacancy, community preservation committee, one housing authority vacancy, one planning vacancy, and one resident. Hmm. Conservation commission is no longer four vacancies, thanks to the war selectmen tonight. There's only one, there'll be one come July twelfth is when that resignation will take effect. Constable, one vacancy. There's no vacancies on cultural council now. Strike that off the list. Finance committee, two vacancies, historical commission, three vacancies, open space committee, three vacancies. We just abolished that committee, so get that off our agenda. And zoning board of appeals, one vacancy, two alternate vacancies.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As a follow-up to you and Mr. Hinckley's fall to service, I'd like to propose, we think about at some point over the summer, doing a volunteer recognition day for all the people who serve it, serve our town on committees. And one, give us a chance to interact and meet them in a, in a way. So, you know, I know Mr. Kelly has done a cookout at the council on aging, maybe something like that. Or maybe, you know, we use the tent at the golf course as off hours or something along those lines since we already have a facility there. But I think it might be a nice touch on our end to recognize those who are serving the town and it might bring some interest. And we could use it as an opportunity to say, hey, look, is there anything you need, right? We talk about like beautification, all these different boards and commissions. We don't know what resources they need and what help they might need or guidance they might need. So I'd like to just put that up for consideration at some point over the next year, whether it's in summer, fall, whatever it is.
I think it's a great idea. I'm glad that you just brought it up. I was gonna talk to Mr. Kelly, actually, a similar thing. And I kind of like the idea of the golf course tent, right? So I think we can put something like that together, maybe, you know, when it cools off a little bit, maybe in September, right, where it's not so hot and people can actually sit out and enjoy the weather. So we'll figure out what day, we'll work with the golf committee and figure out what day we can put something together. And they're not utilizing the tent and we can have a little...
Yeah.
And I'd be more than happy to donate some money to that cause for the food and things of the like that we're gonna be serving to these volunteers. So I'm all aboard with that a hundred percent.
Absolutely.
All right. Great. Thanks, Mr. Lona.
Yep.
Great idea. All right. We have an executive session. Seeing as there's no other business, the next board of selectmen's meeting I did announce will be July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Is four-thirty gonna work up? Instead of four? Can we do four-thirty instead of the four? Is that okay with you?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. All right. So that'll be four-thirty.
Then it's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, July eleventh. That's correct, a week after Fourth of July. So we get a little, we got a little minibus between now and then. But Mr. Kelly and I have a lot of work to do between now and then on a number of different issues. So is there, seeing as there's no other business, is there a motion to go into executive session on the general law, chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty-one, eight-three, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, police chief, and administrative assistant to the board of selectmen. If an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, as the chair saw declares, and the board will not return to public session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote. Mr. Lona?
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We are now in executive session.